The time is 5:31 PM on Monday, February 27th, and I'd like to call this work session to order. First, first on our agenda are city updates. Ms. Solano, please take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair and City Council and Mayor Gradisar. I've had my eyes dilated this afternoon, so I'm having a little bit difficulty reading, but I could talk. So I have a COVID update. The one-week cumulative positive case count is 94.3, which is up from last Monday, and the one-week positivity rate is 8.97, which is also up some. There must be some additional patients in the hospital as Pueblo County has declined from 12 days of stabilized hospitalizations down to seven days at Parkview. I do want to switch gears towards the work, city work, city council work retreat this coming Saturday. The final agenda will go out to everyone electronically tomorrow, and if you have any of the city council priorities that you'd like to present on, on Saturday, I'll add them to the, to the guiding document and send them electronically tomorrow, and then also have printed copies for everyone on, on Saturday. And the last update for the evening is that the Fill the Impact Newsletter from the mayor's office was released earlier today. There are hard copies available at the table at the back. The newsletter will also be available on the city's website and through social media, and wanted to recognize Counsel Flores, who provided the City Council Coroner article for this newsletter. And, and that concludes the updates for the city. Do you have any questions or directions for next Monday?
Thank you, Ms. Solano, for that update. Are there questions from council? Seeing none, just wanted to remind everyone that our council retreat is going to be Saturday, starting at nine at the convention center. It's also open to the public. So if you would like to join us, the public is definitely invited. Otherwise, see you then. And moving right along then, seeing no other questions for Chief of Staff Solano, our friends from the Housing Authority are going to present. So can I please have Mr. Trujillo and Ms. Aragon to the podium, please?
Okay. Good evening, City Council. Thank you all very much for giving us the opportunity to speak to you a little bit, give you an update of what we've been up to at the Housing Authority. My name is Andrea Aragon. I am the current Chair of the Board. I've been on the board since 2019. I started just right before COVID. And definitely was an interesting time. We have had, over that time, several interim directors, and now we have had Stephen for over a year, and we are really making progress. So we are appreciative of your time. I'm going to turn it over to Stephen, and I would just say, I am honored to be a Commissioner. Housing is very important. It's extremely important to the city of Pueblo, and I've been very impressed with the work that the Housing Authority has done to provide affordable homes, but also to treat the individuals that are utilizing those homes with dignity as well.
Thank you, Chair Aragon. Appreciate it very much. And again, good evening, council members. It's a pleasure to be with you here today. Have just a few items that we'd like to share with you, some history of the agency for those that may not be as familiar, and then certainly kind of give you an update of some of the biggest projects that we have underway right now within our portfolio. As some of you may know, the Housing Authority was created in 1953, and the very first project that our agency undertook was the building of 220 units off of Prairie, which we know as the Sangre de Cristo Apartments. That is coming back today as one of our biggest projects, and I'll share more of that here in just a moment. But we were created through the United States Federal Housing Act of 1937. And we were the second agency in the state of Colorado to come to fruition and have been doing this work to provide housing and rental assistance to our low-income families since that time. We receive a number of different subsidy programs through the federal government that help us provide these different programs, and each of them come with different restrictions or different requirements that our team administers. And so we are very diligent in what program makes sense for the family when they come to us in terms of where they are in their journey for, for housing and what we could do to provide support to them. We also have to comply with the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1988, which is a staple, in making sure that our team is, is aware and making sure that they are certified in those programs and understanding what that means as we work today. Some of the programs that you may travel around and see in the community, just to highlight that are a part of the Housing Authority over the years, is obviously, as I mentioned, the building of the Sangre de Cristo Apartments in 1953. That was our first project. The redevelopment of the Rude Candy Building, if you've happened to drive by that particular property. Mesa Tower, located in the Mesa Junction area of our community. Our Mineral Palace Tower, located right off of I-25, which used to be the home to many of our staff. We still have staff on the 10th floor that now handle our Section 8 department. We also have a number of scattered sites throughout the community of Pueblo. And a part of our goal when it comes to working with our residents and our maintenance is to never have our properties appear, that, that you'd never be able to tell that it was a housing property. We want to work with our tenants to keep the yards where they need to be, to keep the property where it needs to be. Because at some point when that tenant moves on to another program, whether it's homeownership, and that's certainly a goal that we have for our residents, that's a unit that we want to be able to have in good shape to then offer to the next individual in our community that may need some of that assistance. So we work with our tenants very closely in getting back out onto our properties as a result of not being able to do so through the time of COVID has certainly been a priority for our maintenance staff and certainly our property managers as well. And as I mentioned, we have a number of HUD programs that we execute, as well as CHAFRA programs that we administer on behalf of their organization as well. So a lot of different, and a lot of different programs go into just offering housing throughout the community of Pueblo, and that's always something that our team that we have takes very serious in the different programs that we manage there. Fast forward to today, I mentioned that the Sangre de Cristo Apartments are the biggest redevelopment project that we have underway right now. This was a four-phase project, and we are currently in Phase Three in redeveloping those 212 units that were on the property. And once we're done with all four phases, our goal is to have a total of 220 units at that site. And I believe many of you had had the opportunity to tour. However, I will extend an invitation to you all again, in order to make sure that if you have a chance, please come on out and check, check out these properties. We'd love to invite everybody again to see the progress that we've made in the last year and the development that's taking place there. And I can tell you, from a resident perspective, there's a lot of excitement and energy as this project rolls forward and is near completion. As of today, I got a quick report before we start our meeting here today that we are on or ahead of schedule in many areas of that development, which we are excited about. That's always a goal when you're doing these projects. Right now, the biggest undertaking of our agency is the Crawford Townhomes. This is the third phase, as I mentioned. This will be 49 total units. There will be 12 buildings in total in this phase that are erected. Right now, seven of those already have roofs on them. Many of them are already at the point of final things being put in, such as drywall, paint, and those areas. So we are making some great progress on that particular development. And we have two more of them that are in the framing stage as we speak here today. Come September 1st will be the first group of residents that we will move over into the first four buildings, and then October we'll move the next four buildings in, and then come November 1st, all of those remaining residents on that property will be moved into our Crawford Townhomes. And then we will begin this process over again, where we look at the last phase, which we will, which we've titled our sitter phase in terms of that redevelopment. The one thing that you have before you on your chair is also a yearly report that we produce. I'll just highlight a few areas there. Want to be mindful and respectful of our time here this evening. In total, we have, at the time of production for this particular document, 742 public housing units. We, at the time, administered over 1,200 vouchers. That is a number that always fluctuates, and a part of the vouchers that we, that we have difficulty with is just the inventory. And I'm sure, as many of you know, that is a, a big topic of conversation for our entire community, the availability of housing and how these come to be. So when it comes to the administering of the vouchers, that we work very diligently to try and ensure that landlords understand in the community what the voucher program is. We've done presentations to the Southern Colorado Renters Association and others as well. And this number obviously is a reflection of the vouchers that are currently being used within the community of Pueblo as well. And we have 354 LIHTC properties. LIHTC stands for Low-Income Housing Tax Credits. These particular properties are put together with a multitude of different entities and partners. The city has been one of those of which we, again, extend our gracious thanks to you all for that as well. In putting these projects together, working with investors and the many others to make these available, this number two is increasing because as we redevelop our properties at our Sangre de Cristo site, this is one that we're, we're moving them into that area to be able to have a voucher program as well. So it gives tenants more options, if you will. And as we look to the future, this is another area that we evaluate and determine what role we can play in making sure that we help to address the housing needs and the shortage, if you will, in many different areas. So it takes some time. It takes some work to put it together, but we've certainly demonstrated through the many properties that we believe we have the knowledge and expertise to continue doing that, and certainly have an interest in doing so as we look to the future. So this is a snapshot of what we put together on a yearly basis. You'll be receiving in a few months, as we come to the midpoint of this year, another report that helps to highlight the work of the agency, and we'll give you more in-depth at that point about what the sitter phase would entail and some other items of operation there as well. I also would like to take a moment and recognize some additional members of my leadership team that are here with me tonight that helped make this possible. We have Mr. Joe Caracato, that's our Director of Planning and Development. So he is ultimately responsible for making sure those roofs go on as they should in all of our properties. We also have with us Mrs. Patricia Rivas, who's our Assistant Executive Director, has been with the agency. Both individuals have been with the agency for a number of years, have a great deal of institutional knowledge that is so valuable in what we've done before and looking to the future. And we also have with us today in attendance, one of our other Commissioners, Mrs. Phyllis Sanchez, who has joined us here in addition to Ms. Andrea Aragon. So I want to thank them as well. And the many other staff, I want to publicly acknowledge and thank them. Everything that I shared with you and so much more about the requirements and the compliance of programs and the things that we do and in looking to the future in terms of what else may we be able to do that we've done from the past is, none of that would be possible without our greatest asset, and that is our people. Our staff that do this work day in and day out to certify our residents, work with our residents, work with also our community partners. We have an entire wraparound program, if you will, that when they come into our office and indicate they have a need beyond just that of housing, we believe it that it's important that we could reach out to a partner at that point, whether that's a workforce center, whether that's our family self-sufficiency program and be able to pull them in to help support that particular resident at that point in time. So that is just a few other items that I wanted to mention there, and with the time left, I'll turn it over to Chair Aragon to wrap up, and we'll take questions from there.
Well, I get the easy part, and that is really just to say thank you. I do want to assure you that the Housing Authority has so many regulations and requirements that are passed down from federal government, state government, highly regulated. It is very challenging. It's very complex. But we are striving really hard to do our best and try to bring more affordable housing back into the community. So we look forward to continue working with you and with the mayor, and we would be happy to try to entertain any questions that you might have.
If I may make one more remark that, that just hit me, and that is, again, to echo the thanks also to the city staff. Much of what we do on a daily basis would not be possible without the mayor's staff and those in the Development Department, Brian Gallagher and others. So we thank the city as well for being a partner and their staff for the work that they do. Thank you again.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Trujillo and Ms. Aragon. And as we're passing around, thanks, thanks for everything that you guys do to help meet that need of affordable housing. So what questions are there from council? Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for putting together this comprehensive look at just everything you have going on now. So if the Phase Three is underway right now, when is Phase Four going to be complete? And do you have any projects you're thinking about or lined up when all that's complete?
So we are currently evaluating that timeline. Our Planning and Development Department is working with HUD and the other partners to look at what that Phase Four development will be. Beyond that, which typically is about a two-to-three-year process, I think roughly, we are actually going through our own exercise with our Commissioners and staff to say, what next? What's beyond that? How do we view and what do we envision for 2030 and beyond? What do we have to do to position the agency for such? So we are, you know, essentially what we're talking about today are three years out in terms of lining those resources up.
Great. Thank you. And also just think about some of the folks who live in the, some of these developments to help be part of some of the ideas and solutions for our future projects. Just think about that.
If I may add, we do have a individual from the board that is a resident or was a resident within a certain timeframe. So they do provide perspective as well, and we have done town halls where we go to the congregate sites and we seek input all the time. But thank you.
Yeah, great.
Counselor Flores?
Yeah, welcome and a great report. I was, my question has to do with the many agencies. As you know, there's been a housing study that says we're going to need 10,000 units in the next 10 years. And we're probably at the stage right now, we're not even close to filling up that, you know, that need. But, you know, we have Housing Authority, that you're working on housing. We have our own Department of Housing. We have PSADA that's looking at a big housing project. We have Neighbor Works. And my question is, is there opportunities, I guess, on a larger scale, having all of these agencies working together, you know, to form some sort of a consortium where you would meet periodically and look at opportunities that are much bigger than you can individually? Has that thought, or is something like that being done now?
Thank you for the question, Councilman Flores. And what I can answer at a high level is yes, there is a gathering of these agencies now coming together, and I believe the city has helped to be a driver behind that to start having these discussions, not only about how do we address housing, but how do we address homelessness? What role does each entity possibly play? And at a much bigger level, how can we leverage some of the resources that are out there? In many of these developments, it is a competitive environment because you have to pursue 9% tax credits from CHAFRA from the state. So you have to make an application, and there's obviously coordination and not wanting to compete with one another's projects. So that has really, I think, led to some of those higher discussions of how do we collaborate and plan this out? And what expertise might the Housing Authority have, for example, that could lend to this project and vice versa? So that is a monthly call that has been assembled. It's typically been held on Zoom now, coming to in-person, which is great. And those conversations are now happening about how do we really kickstart this housing development for our community?
The other question I have has to do with homelessness. You know, it, it appears that the community looks at the city continually about solving this homelessness problem. And in a way, you guys are working on that, on, on, around the edges as far as the ultimate goal is getting them into permanent housing. But even after we do that, you still have the basic day-to-day needs of homeless people that need a shelter in, in, in the winter and a shelter when it gets really hot in the summer, and then all the other services that they need. Is there any ideas you could give to the city? I, I don't know. In other cities, I know housing authorities get involved directly with helping the homeless. And I'm wondering, do you have a program like that? Because I'm not aware of it, but, you know, are there any ideas or opportunities with grants or anything else that you can give to the city to maybe pursue those kinds of opportunities?
Thank you for the question, Councilman Flores. That is an area that we're doing some more research on. At this current point, there is no immediate house or emergency housing that the Housing Authority offers within our portfolio. However, it's a question that we've started to look at prior to the pandemic with something that we very early on began kind of digging into to see what would that look like? And what would that mean for our agency? Now, as we come off the heels of the pandemic, it's once again come onto the radar to determine, again, what role can we play in assisting the city? Whether that's by bringing resources in through HUD and what that would may look like? Is that pursuing a program specifically to us? And what would that mean for our portfolio of operation? Staffing, programs, all those types of things? Or is that already being done, and we can help come in next to that particular entity that's offering that? So again, I reference, as a matter of fact, just as, I believe it was last Friday, there was a conversation that was facilitated, asking these same questions and beginning to lay that out in terms of what else might be out there? Who can pursue that information for us? And how do we all align to make the best use of our resources? So those are active conversations that we are engaged in, we're listening to, and we're also bringing information to.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Other questions for the Housing Authority? Counselor Graham?
I don't have a question, just more of a comment. In your, your display here, it says 73% heads of household are women. Are those, that number's pretty substantial. Are those, you know, single moms with children? Or what is that? What does that kind of look like?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Graham. What this refers to is the head of household is the primary contact that's listed on the lease. I, I would have to do some additional research to determine what are the additional statistics behind that. But this basically means that the one that is pursuing the housing on the application to be in charge of the lease, if you will, is indicated as such head of household. So that's how that statistic is viewed. Thank you. Thank you.
So President Graham and I actually recently just took a tour of the Fuel and Iron Building, which I know that the Housing Authority will manage, I think, 26 or 27 units there. They're beautiful. When are residents expected to move in there?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Martinez. We actually just took a tour today. Our staff was there. And there was a few last minute, what we'll call punch list items that they were working on. It's anticipated in the next couple of weeks, our Compliance Department can begin allowing residents to start moving into those units. We are a partner in that particular project in helping to get all the information documented, go through the compliance areas as they have the different programs that are playing them, get them moved in. And right now, it looks like a few weeks, but as we know with construction, anything could maybe disrupt that a little bit, but I know their team is eagerly working, and we're at the ready to get that housed right away.
Great. And that, that complex has studios. Is that the first studio in the Housing Authority, or are there other studios?
We do have some other studio properties or apartments, if you will, throughout our portfolio. So this will be, so we have got some familiarity, and this will be a mix of one- and two-bedroom and studio apartments at the Fuel and Iron property.
Right. And then the Biden-Harris administration just recently came out with their own, you know, homeless strategic plan, and they have a goal to reduce homelessness by 25% by January 2025. And in that plan, there's a lot of housing and HUD monies that I think are going to become available at the federal level. So I guess whatever we need to do as a city and to work with you all to get your hands on that money, I think that we need to do.
Yes, thank you for that comment. We are actively in conversations with our HUD representatives, as well as the other agencies that we are a member of, you know, relative to housing that are going through that and determining what would, what would fit for us and what we do, what is outside of that. So you can rest assured, you'll be the first group to hear when it, when it comes to that, if it's an opportunity that we can pursue in partnership and jointly together, so.
Besides that, is there anything else that we can actively be doing to help meet better the needs of affordable housing with the Housing Authority?
You know, I, I think at this point, we, we again would just welcome you to, to come and gain more knowledge about the properties and the programs that we operate. Sometimes what we find is that there's assumptions that is housing is just housing. But what we have found is there's so many different pathways and opportunities within that through the number of programs that we operate alone, and in addition to the many others. And so we would invite anybody to just come and learn more about it. What do they mean? What's the opportunity there? What can you do or can't you do within those programs? And we're happy to share that information and any, to want to be an extension to that, so.
And I guess I have another question. So with Counselor Graham's comment about the majority of your leaseholders being women, have you ever thought about childcare or the needs of childcare for the residents in those facilities?
We have had conversations with PCC's childcare program. I don't know, and I'd have to maybe defer to Mrs. Rivas on what, to what extent. Again, a lot of these different efforts kind of, you know, were paused during the time of COVID as it was just focused on the most important and the basics of keeping everybody housed. But as we get further away from that, more of these, now that we've also had some new staff members are coming back onto that radar, so we can discuss that. We do have a partnership with the Pueblo Child, I believe it's the Pueblo Southside Childcare Center located at our Sprague location, which is right adjacent to the property that we're redeveloping now, so.
And, and if I may add to that, just knowing the history of the Southside Children's Center, that site was created really to help the families in that area so that they could get on the path to working and self-sufficiency. And so that's a, that's a big reason why they are located in that spot. We, we probably need a lot more, though.
Counselor Maestri?
So that our community is aware, with the Fuel and Iron opening up, how are you accepting new applications on that? Or does the waiting list come first? How does that process work in applying to live there?
Thank you, Councilmember. There is a waitlist, or I should say, an interest list that's being housed at our office. All they would have to do is stop by our Victoria location at 201 South Victoria, or give us a call on the phone. And they would speak to our Compliance Department and put their name to that list as well, and then they'll bring them in once that time starts.
And does that waitlist start like from whatever's, where people have been on it for like a year or a year and a half? Is that how you start that building? You start at the top of the list?
Yes. And, and there's a number of other factors that go into that our Compliance Department looks at. If they have a, you know, a voucher with a preference, or there's, there's a number of different things like that, but as it just comes in by time and date, and they're added to that list, and then as we go through openings, they'll reach back out and determine where they're at. And occasionally, they will also do a review of the lists just to make sure if that individual still has an interest, or if they wish to be removed because they found housing somewhere else in downtown Pueblo or what have you. So they're constantly taking a look at that.
And how many people are on the list currently?
That, I don't have a number off the top of my head. I, you know, because there are a few different ones.
It was my understanding that they were going to, as Ms. Rivas said, allow the workers that are going to be working in the food court, the, the priority to.
Would those workers be receiving vouchers also? I'm not sure. Okay.
This is.
And really, my question was, how many people are on the housing list as a whole in Pueblo? That's.
That number also fluctuates, and I, again, defer to my, my colleague, Mrs. Rivas, is this is a part of what she oversees because each property could also have its own list. There could be, there's not just one master list because every property, as I mentioned, could be under a different program. So if it's following CHAFRA, then there's a list for that. If it's under HUD or public housing, then there's a list for that. I don't know if we have a rough estimate because we actually were just undergoing work to review the list.
Well, we currently just opened, in the beginning of December, we opened up the section.
So approximately 450 people altogether overall? Okay. All righty. Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Counselor Tencio, I know that you're via Zoom. Do you have any questions for the Housing Authority?
No, I don't have anything.
All right. Well, seeing no other questions. Thank you so much, Ms. Aragon and Ms. Trujillo. We will move on. Thank you. Okay, so next on our agenda, we have a Sister Cities Commission update. So can I have Mr. Saladino to the podium, please? And for every guest that, which is great, can they just introduce themselves for the record?
I used to do this for a living, and I can't get it right. We also have with us members Sergeant Frank Ortega, Eric Segal, and our Treasurer Fritz Anzalvar are with us tonight. Our special guest, and we want her to take, you know, a good amount of the time in a moment, is Azaria Mendoza Segal, and she is doing the mural project, which we hope you're familiar with because you helped fund it. And she's, what she passed out to you are some of the murals. So we'll get to that in a second, but I thought we'd bring you up to date on our sister cities. We have six. We have two in Mexico, Pueblo and Chihuahua, Mexico. We have Way Fang China, and I'm giving them to you in the order they became sister cities. Lucas Scola, Sicily, Bergamo, Italy, and Marivor, Slovenia. And we relate to them in various ways. There, there are different kind of ways of connecting to these sister cities. If you ever wanted to get into the detail of how they became sister cities, but we'd be here all night. So we'll tell you our main relationship with them. So we'll tell you our main relationship with them, and then we can talk about how the murals came about for them. First of all, I would like Sergeant Ortega to come forward and talk about, because he is in constant contact with Puebla and Chihuahua. Uh, both of those, especially Puebla, had kind of slipped a little bit until Sergeant Ortega became a councilperson or a member of our commission. And he is singly responsible for reigniting them both. So tell us where we are with them, Sergeant.
So I want to make sure. Um, so we've had that relationship with Puebla and Chihuahua for a long time. A lot stronger with Chihuahua recently. Our police chief, our current police chief, our previous police chief have been there. They've done presentations. We've done training with their police and their fire. And here's spring, summer, twenty twenty-three. Going to try to get the commission, city council and the mayor to go on a trip. Um, I think it'll be good. And then part of the trip would be an economic development trip. Uh, there's a lot of businessmen in Chihuahua that want to turn pesos into dollars and I want them to do it in Pueblo.
And we have done a lot of training back and forth with them. In addition, because we're going to talk about our, are we, you know, what we've done in terms of, uh, the tennis tournament that's here. And Puebla and Chihuahua every year are represented at the, what is now the Candy Cup Tennis Tournament. Um, so they always send delegations for those. And there used to be a famous run in Pueblo, but when the chief didn't kind of went down, uh, so did the run. Um, so next, and, uh, Frank, Frank had like a twenty-five minute presentation and I said, we have fifteen minutes altogether. But I didn't know he was going to cut it down to a minute and a half, so. He, he could go on forever. We, there's a lot going on with Puebla and Chihuahua, especially since he got involved. Um, the next one, uh, would be Way Fang. They actually came to us in the nineteen eighties when I was on the council and wanted a sister city in America. Uh, they originally went to Alamosa. Alamosa said, we're not big enough, go to Pueblo. And so that relationship has been around since the eighties. And, uh, Jacob Chi is obviously our main contact. He's from China. And so we do have correspondence back and forth. Not a lot has happened since COVID, obviously. But they also send tennis players every year to the Candy Cup. Um, and then I think the next one would be Luca Sicola, Sicily started. Uh, a group of Sicilians in, they had their own, uh, lodge in Pueblo. It would no longer exist, but they actually made that happen and made it an official sister city. It is the smallest of our sister cities. And the main reason for the tie there is that all I can tell you is I visited Luca Sicola and they have uh, a monument to their war dead in front of the Catholic Church. And the names on there look like the Pueblo phone book. There just are a jillion people from Luca Sicola have, have their ancestry. The ancestry is Luca Sicola for people who are in Pueblo now. And that's the main tie. It is the smallest one. It doesn't have a university, but it's, you know, it's one of our first sister cities. Bergamo, Italy came about in two thousand and four. It is the sister city. Obviously I'll know a little bit more about that one for obvious reasons, but we have more connections to them than any other of our sister cities. We have a sister city, sister county, sister university and sister Rotary relationship with Bergamo. Of the most recent thing that happened there, and by the way, we do have students going back and forth all the time. There is a student from Pueblo in Bergamo now. And normally they have students here, but they just don't this particular semester. Um, but the most recent thing we did, and again, Mayor Gradishar was involved in this, is that Bergamo was the hardest hit city in Europe when it came to the COVID, not just in Italy, but in all of Europe. And so our sister city commission teamed with Rotary here to raise money to assist them buying masks and the things they needed. And, uh, that was a very successful operation. We, we raised quite a bit of money. And not only that, but Mayor Gradishar and I both appeared on Bergamo TV. Um, he had to speak English though. But anyway, um, so that, but the big connection there are students. There are students going back and forth at all times. They did send tennis players before, but I think they quit when the Slovenians beat them, so. And, um, and our most recent one, and, uh, Mr. Anzalvar is here, but he said he didn't want to talk. So I hope I do him justice. But we became sister cities with Marivor, Slovenia. Again, Mayor Gradisar has visited there. But the two key people in, in having that become our sister city were definitely Mr. Anzalvar and, uh, former Congressman Ray Kogosik. They worked diligently to get that connection. As you know, we have a lot of people of Slovenian heritage. And the, the key to that entire relationship have been the tennis players. And Mr. Anzalvar gets credit for that. They come every, every year, sometimes as many as five. And, um, and they do very well. Like I said, I think they scared away the Italians because they kept beating them. But, uh, that's our main connection there. So whereas we have the students with Bergamo, we have the tennis players with Way Fang and, and, uh, Marivor, and then a variety of relationships, especially with the police and fire with our two Mexico sister cities. So that's, that's kind of what's happening right now. But I think the biggest thing that we've ever undertaken is happening right now. And that is our mural project. Uh, it's been funded by you, by the county and by the Rawlings Foundation, gave us a nice grant to make it possible. Uh, we found a wonderful artist. And I hope you're nice to her because her parents are here, her stepfather's here and her grandmother's here, so be nice to her. And, um, she's a fantastic artist and she is going to be the artist, or no, she's not going to be. She already is the artist on the project. And she has already begun, but, uh, you can't do mural work in the winter. So she started in the fall and it will start again in the spring when the temperatures get better. Uh, one of the things that we're very proud of is that the sister cities themselves were involved in this project. They signed off on or created their own murals. And, uh, Azaria, I shouldn't say Ms. Mendoza Segal, but she, um, she designed, for example, Bergamo's from scratch by doing research into Bergamo. We submitted it to Bergamo and they said, if, if we were picking the mural, we would have picked that. So we were very proud of her research and the depth to which she went to acquire these, these murals. Um, so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to her so she could tell you a little bit more. And you did give the pictures already, right? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Saladino, for those kind words. Good evening, City Council. Thank you for your time. And yes, I'm here to talk about the newest mural project. So this mural project will be two hundred and twenty feet long approximately. So that's about five thousand square feet. It'll be the largest mural so far on the levee. Very exciting. And we're excited that it'll create public awareness about our connections with the sister cities and also highlight the uniqueness of each of these cities. The location of this six-part mural is by the pedestrian bridge, giving great view to the permanent art installation during events held at the river and from pedestrian traffic on the river trail. As Mr. Saladino was saying, each city is highlighted individually with their own postcard style mural. And the designs were made in collaboration. So as he was saying, Bergamo's mural is of the Church of Basilica de Santa Maria Magori. And Marivor Slovenia features two dancers in traditional dress and an accordion player to honor the roots of polka music. And behind the dancers is the world's oldest grapevine, famous to the city. Chihuahua, Mexico is an image of a Chihuahua dog submitted by the city and the famous Cathedral of Chihuahua. Alongside with a sacred flower used in traditional indigenous ceremonies to the area. Luca Sicula Sicily features the Percuta olive that is grown in the city and our own gagliano's has in store here. And behind is the traditional Sicilian pillars. Puebla, Mexico's mural is of the famous tile work in the city in the shape of the mountain outside Puebla. And this pays homage to the Puebla, Puebla Plaza mural here in town that shows that same tile work. Lastly, Way Fang China is of the traditional dragon and the kite to showcase that the city is the international kite city. And we're excited to hold a celebration event with the mayors of these sisters, some of the mayors of the sister city after the completion next year.
That would probably be, uh, not, not this year on Mayor's Day, but two, in twenty twenty-four on Mayor's Day. That's our goal, right, Mayor? Okay, so, um. So that, that's what we're, that's, those are the foundations. That's what's going on, on an ongoing basis. But again, this is the biggest thing sister cities ever tried. I think it's bigger than taking the ambulance down there, which is a great story to, uh, Chihuahua. But, um, I mean, I think it was the police chief at the time, Jim Billings, and I'm, I'm not sure that all the laws were followed. But we got the, we got the ambulance to them. And, uh, but this is the biggest thing we've ever done, the mural project. We, we know that a lot of people in Puebla are not even aware of the sister city program. And yet we think it's one of the best things that the city has going for it. Um, for those of you who don't know, this is not just something that we cooked up. There's a sister city international. And that all started back in, in the fifties with President Eisenhower. But it is now very much international. And you have to follow certain guidelines and certain rules and, and you have to stick to those. So I think it's just a wonderful thing for our community to be involved with, especially with the ones that we have and the way they represent our traditions. Um, so we're very happy to come and tell you about all that. But now the community will be able to see symbols of all those cities, uh, in a very prominent way, so. We're happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Saladino and Ms. Segal for that information. What questions are there from council? Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, these are great, uh, illustrations. The use of color, um, is phenomenal. I love the Talavetas, uh, those tiles on the Puebla Mexico, um, postcard. Uh, are you thinking about possibly printing off some postcards? And maybe, uh, El Pueblo Museum, History Museum or other places would host and sell those?
Great idea. Yeah, we've talked about T-shirts and such things, but that's a great place to put postcards of this.
This is great. Thanks. Can't wait for that.
We know you're an artist, so I was a little nervous. I said, I hope he has a friendly question, so.
Other questions? Uh, Counselor Flores?
That was a great presentation. I love these. Uh, they're very impressive. My question is, uh, as a commission, uh, you obviously have, you know, uh, six wonderful, you know, countries and cities. Uh, do you ever look at other, uh, places in the world that, uh, and, and is there space or time, I guess, to add additional cities and countries?
Yes, and it's a great question because we're right now negotiating with, uh, a city in Korea that is the home of, of, um, um, Jason Blank, CS Wins. And, uh, and we were this close to finding a sister city in Germany. And then something went wrong, but Dagmar Haney did a great, uh, job working on that. And we're not, that isn't dead. It's just, it's just on hold right now. So yeah, we're always open to them. I'd love to have one in Ireland, so, you know. We are open to more and there's room on the levee for more.
Yeah, I, I had the opportunity of going to, um, South Korea with the mayor and, uh, uh, Patty or Javik, and, uh, they were, they brought it up of having a closer relationship. And of course they're the owners of CS Wins now in our community. And, uh, we could become, uh, much closer with them because they want to utilize, you know, Public Community College for training and uh, this is a lot of opportunity there to get closer to South Korea, which is an amazing country.
Well, uh, the mayor and I will be sending a letter to them, I think this week. Um, outlining what, how we see that relationship developing. So we're very actively negotiating with them right now. So. And by the way, we are independent, but we used to be a, a city agency and a county agency, so. Uh, we still, but you kept supporting us when we became independent and we appreciate your support very much.
Uh, when is the Candy Cup, Mr. Saladino?
They had, uh, TR Toppers is struggling with that decision. It's always been on Memorial Day weekend. And, um, they're worried that there's a lot of competition. There are other tennis tournaments, there's graduations that weekend. So they are right now trying to arrive at a time, and I know Mr. Anzalvar is on pins and needles because he has a lot of players to bring over and that's a lot of work. So they're looking at the middle of June and they're looking at Labor Day. So as of yesterday, they didn't know yet.
Okay.
You know, TR Toppers is the one that, that's why it's called Candy Cup, so.
And is the next trip to Chihuahua or Puebla?
Um, Sergeant? Chihuahua, okay.
Great. Other questions? No, I, I pass by this mural every day and I think it's gorgeous. So great work. And I look forward to seeing all of these inside of it.
By the way, congratulations on your wedding.
Thanks, Mr. Saladino. Okay, moving right along then. Um, is our friends from the ADA Advisory Committee? So can I have Ms. Campbell and Mr., Ms. Castor to the podium, please? Oh, there you go, Kristen. Oh, one more time.
Our activities this last year and during COVID. Um, we did send it on.
Yeah, and we have a PowerPoint.
So we're going to pull up the, the PowerPoint right now. If you also, um, want to press your, Sharon, the mic, just so you're, there you go.
Oh, if you want me to speak more. Um, we didn't stop working during the COVID years. We just used Zoom. It's turned out to be an excellent tool because a lot of us have trouble getting places to have meetings anyway. So, um, we've, we, we used our time productively.
For those of you who don't know, the ADA committee. Uh, next slide.
Oh, you, you mean, um, well, I've been doing this work since two thousand and three at least. But the committee was made formal after that. Where is the? Where do I point it?
The history of the ADA committee is that we were established by, yeah, the Department of Justice. And because of that, you're kind of stuck with us.
What they did is they did a review of mid-sized cities to see how their compliance with the ADA was. It was called Project Civic Access. Pueblo got picked. Um, we, it was like drawing straws and they found ninety-four, ninety-two counts of non-compliance. And, uh, one of the requirements was to have a committee of people with disabilities who are residents of Pueblo to monitor the city's compliance. Knowing that sidewalks are going to be something we have to work with forever. So we've been formally in existence since, what, that said, two thousand and four, but we were working on it before then. Um, we always could use more people, yes. Um, and many of us have served more than four-year terms because there wasn't anybody else there. Now we're getting some turnover and it's wonderful.
One of our projects is we monitor access to city facilities and services and housing put in by the, uh, housing department. And we get ongoing updates from the.
From all the departments. All the departments. To do with, uh, with disability. We had at one time a lot of input from the police department because they had ongoing problems working with the deaf community. We need to reinstate that. Also, yeah. Also, the handicap parking patrol, it's not required that we have a patrol. And it does require some investment from the police department, so we can't even think about it until they have time. But you'd be amazed at how many people we cured of the need to park in a handicap space once we started our patrol. And it, it really is necessary because like I use a ramp van. Now anybody can park in a, in a handicap van space. There isn't a specific space reserved for vans. Anyone with a placard can do that. But I must park in a van space to put my lift down. And when people are parked in correctly or there's someone who's not eligible for the space. Uh, I go out into the boonies in the end of the parking lot where I think maybe no one will park next to me and block my ramp. And then I wheel it. And I can't do that in the winter, so.
And it's very dangerous because I mean, she's wheeling in behind cars.
Yes.
Backing up.
Walmart is really interesting. I, I like raised my hand and say, hey, I'm here. So it's, it's something that we, we. So it's, it's something that we, we really appreciate the contributions we've had from city department heads on compliance.
Especially Public Works.
Oh, Public Works.
Public Works keeps us updated on the status of putting in curb cuts. And also on status of sidewalks to the extent that we can do them. And they have been awesome. We have been very favorably impressed by all of the departments that have been represented, the transportation. They work really, really hard and they all deserve a raise.
One, you see here what happens when there is no curb ramp. You get to the end of the walk and now what? Very often you circle the block, you look for a driveway. If you look for a place where the curb is broken. And that takes up a lot of time. And if you're using a manual wheelchair, it's a lot of effort. So we really, you know, we really hope that at least the business sector of the city really works on that access. You'd be amazed at how green our money is. And we'd like to spend it in our businesses in town and we can't do that unless we can get there. And I know there are some people who have actually said, but I don't have any customers in wheelchairs. Is that because you've got a four-inch step?
So the, one of our projects to be is, is we're going to be working more closely with the business community in hopes of getting more of them to go to the mode of being disability-friendly, not merely accessible. The city has developed a lot of resources and we do utilize them. If you need a ramp, let's say you break your leg, Sarah, or your new husband breaks his leg and you need to get from place A to place B and you need a curb cut put in, then you talk to Public Works and you are number one on the list.
And we do have a certain number of CDBG funds set aside each year for curb ramps. Neighborhood groups also put in more curb ramp requests. And this is being extended to sidewalks in general because people are beginning to realize that if you get up on the sidewalk and it is all cracked and broken and scrubly, it's useless, which is why there are still people driving in the road in their wheelchairs. It's because the sidewalks are in such bad condition. You can't use them. And this is something that we share with any pedestrian in this city. So helping us get this taken care of is really helping everyone. So, but we stretch our sidewalk dollars as much as we possibly can.
Public Works now has another $10 million to work with. And I believe most of it is to make the bus stops accessible. Since many people with mobility impairments cannot afford a van, they use the buses, which have been in the course of our tenure.
They're all accessible.
They're all accessible now. And that is an awesome, awesome accomplishment.
We also know that there is a plan to revamp the routes and everything. The bus company will not even consider it until all of the stops are accessible. So when that happens, there will be a series of public hearings about implementing this new plan. And we are very pleased with the coordination that has come about between Transit and our committee.
And CDOT.
Yes.
CDOT is finally playing more nicely. The condition of our sidewalks is deplorable in many places. Funding is an almost insurmountable problem. And because of that, we are wanting to
Those are outstanding issues because of that. If you have a copy of the settlement agreement, which is actually on the city website, it says sidewalks are kind of an open-ended thing because they know we're not going to finish, we'll probably never finish with them. As soon as we finish, we'll be starting over. But lawyers cannot say anything like that. It's either done or it's not done. So, you know, we really want to work on sidewalks because we think it's important for Pueblo to be pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly, wheelchair-friendly, people-friendly. And that's the best way to get it, get to it. But it's, it's difficult and we do.
We appreciate that.
Appreciate it. Yeah.
Yeah. And we would like, as Kristen said earlier, to get our volunteer handicap parking control back again. It was very, very effective. And the difficulty during COVID, aside from all else, was getting volunteers. Are, we wanted to monitor access to county facilities. Now, county is not included in the settlement agreement.
But we persuaded them that they might want to join us because if they didn't, they might have their own settlement agreement to work with. It's the point.
Well, not only that, we persuaded them because we saved them a lot of money uh, working with them in the planning stages so that they don't have to go back and do an expensive retrofit. So we're, we're working on that. Uh, the county courthouse now has restored their disability office in the basement, I'm happy to report. So this is, is very nice step forward.
Do they do all the services there like they used to? Do they what? Do they do all of the services there? Yes. Okay. That was something that the previous or county clerk set up. And then for some reason he's setting closed it. It's like, why? There's no reason for that. Uh, you can't put a chair like this in those elevators very easily. And if you have a scooter, uh, you know, so if you can get your business done, walk right into the courthouse, there's a window. It's really great.
We want to strengthen our public transit options. They have been absolutely amazing all along, but especially during COVID to keep running the way they've been running. They deserve a raise too. Uh, we do find that SRDA manages the bus staying lines. And because of their management, it is more accessible.
They also keep the lifts in good repair. That's George Chintola. If it weren't for him, transportation would be much more difficult. He keeps the lifts in good repair. And he makes sure the drivers know how to operate them. And I have people around the state saying that bus staying is wonderful because of that. Greyhound doesn't, the drivers do not know one thing about how to operate their lifts or how to maintain them. So this is really a big thing for someone to say they work. I use it. It's wonderful.
Emergency preparedness during COVID turned into reports on COVID primarily. We liked to talk to the emergency planners for the Pueblo.
We have an emergency operations plan.
Yeah, the emergency operations, but the Pueblo Depot used to have very elaborate plans and very elaborate warning systems. And since they're going to be basically shutting down for disposing of the mustard gas, that resource is going to go away. So that's something that is going to have to be supplemented.
One of the things we've tried to get that we have not succeeded in is to have people with, you know, actual people with real disabilities participating in the emergency response exercises. And I know they use schoolchildren and they tell us, but they act really well. Well, I'm sure they do, but nothing can replicate reality. Um, we've got people who are who have communication difficulties. We have people who are deaf. We have people who are blind. They can do a lot of things that other people wouldn't even think about. But still, we have these different conditions and we'd like people to meet them face to face. So maybe the new emergency operations manager will.
We're promoting awareness of the ADA and that's working pretty well. We used to have symposiums at the library. And of course, COVID destroyed that. And then the library decided to renovate with our input and blessings on some of those changes. And we're hoping to go ahead and do that again. Maybe not this year, but next summer. And the Pueblo Community Health Center worked with us closely and came up with an absolutely ideal facility for people with disabilities. If you want to see what it should look like, go get a tour there.
I know that when I put down my ramp to get out to do the tour of the center, I knew we had arrived. Oh, it felt so good not to have to fight to get into a building and to use services. You know, there was no curb in the way. I didn't have to fight my way through parking blocks and get up onto the sidewalk. It was smooth. The doors opened right away. The elevators were clearly marked. They all worked. The whole facility is totally accessible. And I remember it was at that point, and I've been doing this for 20 years now, where I thought, geez, and I just couldn't get the energy to keep doing this. And I realized it's because at least one entity in the city has done it all the way like it should be. That's the example.
We have had some publicity. It's been difficult with the Chieftain covering less and less actual Pueblo stories instead. Um, we need more funding for transit. We need service dogs to be no longer abused. If if you go into any store, you see all these dogs. They're not service dogs, most of them. But you can't really do much about it at this point.
If their feet are not on the floor, they're not service dogs.
Well, unless they need to be right up close to their person.
Everybody will say that though. So that's, that's a challenge. Yes.
We, we are using Zoom and enjoying it. And we need to caption it, but I understand that's easy to do.
And that means you all can participate in our meetings if you want to.
And you are invited to our meetings. Ed Brown used to come to most of our meetings and we always enjoyed seeing someone from council. We look forward to another productive year. And in case you're wondering if we're still needed.
This is Chris Hines. He's running for mayor of Denver. He is part of the larger group that I'm part of, the Colorado Cross Disability Coalition. This is in Denver at the Cleo Parker Robinson Dance Troops stage. They made their auditorium accessible. I didn't think about the stage and he has to participate in this debate or he can't continue with his campaign. It was mandatory. Now, I'm very proud to tell you that Memorial Hall is fully accessible. And I mean, you can be an actor and go back in to a changing room. You can do anything you need to do in that theater to participate at any level. This wouldn't happen in Memorial Hall.
It wouldn't happen in Pueblo. And so we're ahead of Denver.
It also would not happen at PCC. That stage is also accessible.
Yeah.
This is, yes, we are still needed because people will quickly forget. You know, you don't know until it happens to you and it can take 30 seconds to have a car accident. You don't know until it happens to you, just what it is you need and how difficult it is. Not just to deal with the disability, but all of the obstacles that don't need to be there that are in your way. Here's one. When we go to gatherings at in front of, I should say, the county courthouse on the steps, they have a podium and it comes down to the middle. And that's where the mic is. And I learned they put it there because that's as far as the court reaches. Well, I can't fly up the bottom steps. That means I'm not able to participate on the same level as everybody else.
This is why we're working on the camp. Thank you very much. We will continue working on. And if you have questions, if you have concerns, just contact us and we'll help you out.
Great. Well, this has been a wealth of information, Ms. Campbell and Ms. Castor. So thanks for joining us here today. Um, what questions are there from council? Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Sharon and Kristen, for sharing all that information and how important it is for our built-in environment to allow everybody to participate, how important that is and how easy it is for more versatile people to be able to be present. And anyway, it's important for all of us to be at the table. Um, but how can people get involved in your monthly meetings and when do those happen?
Those happen the first Thursday of every month.
First Thursday of every month from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Center Toward Self-Reliance. It's in the old lumberyard opposite the Chieftain.
Right across from the Chieftain.
The old Sutherland's lumberyard, lumberyard. Yes.
And there's also a Zoom link. You have to get your name on the list and that might be a little bit.
Would.
Once you get on the list, you get a Zoom link and and.
You can choose either or.
Most of the time you're on depending on if we have technical difficulties.
Would folks be able to go to the city's website, pueblo.us, to find that Zoom link?
Um, no. You know, our bylaws are there. The settlement agreement is there. I believe it says what our meeting times are. I don't think there's a link.
I don't think there's a Zoom link on there.
We can friend a, phone a friend and Ms. Solano is shaking, is nodding yes.
The Zoom meetings in the city are typically limited to 100, but we can post that Zoom link and we can also add all of you to receive the regular Zoom invite.
That would be great. Thank you.
And I think that link is managed by Public Works.
Yes, I believe that it is.
Yes, it is.
Other, Counselor Flores?
I wanted to tell the both of you that you do amazing work and this is so important. I, if you look at the law itself, the ADA law, it's really a civil rights law. And I don't think most people understand that, but you have been so effective in so many accessibility issues. I'm curious as to whether or not you receive many issues dealing with the many other issues that ADA individuals, people with a disability have trouble with, and that's employment. Uh, you know, there, there's provisions in the ADA day law that you cannot discriminate against an individual because of a disability. And I'm, and there's so many other things, access to cable, access uh, for the right kind of equipment if you're blind or you're deaf. I mean, you can, you can name a lot of things that fall under ADA. And I know that you you probably respond to those things that are apparent and that we need to do in the community. But I'm wondering if you would get those kinds of calls for other issues, whether you have the ability to maybe steer them in the right direction as to what to do.
Center Toward Self-Reliance is what is called an independent living center. It does not, it's not a facility that houses people. It's a service agency. And it is required to do advocacy, peer counseling, uh, information referral and there's one more. There are four of them. Anyway, they do have those resources. They get those phone calls. We also get them individually. If we run into a problem, we try to figure out, okay, who's got the solution to this?
If there is one.
It, it works. No, we, we work really hard on it though, because it's important. Um, I know I had a woman saying, well, Um, I know I had a woman saying, well, I I have a disability and I don't want to go on jury duty, is there a way for me to get out of it? No, that's why we passed the ADA so that you can do it. So, um, you know, that the center is a good place to start, that's why we meet there. Because we want people to have, we want them to have access to us. We want people to feel free to come in there and use their services. And we also want to know more about their services so that we can do information referral. They are a wonderful agency, they're very open ended, even if it's not listed as a necessary service, they do it. Oh, and I wanted to dovetail with housing. Sitting here listening to their presentation going eek, because Pueblo, last time I looked at a census. Pueblo has higher rates of people with disabilities in every category than the general population. It also has a higher rate of people who are older than the general population. It also has a higher rate of poverty than the general population, I don't know why, but it just is. And so if Pueblo is open and serving its people, it needs to do more than what is required. Because that's that's the people we are, housing is incredibly hard to find. I had a person in a wheelchair coming around saying, do you know anywhere I can get my chair in that I can get an apartment? And he wasn't even trying to. He was able to leap some curbs with his, you know, Papa wheelie and leaps and curves and things like that. There wasn't one single apartment open in any of the buildings, whether they were from the Housing Authority or otherwise. And that just broke my heart. Because the only other thing you could do is go to a nursing home for 30 days. And if you have lived with a disability all your life and you end up at a nursing home. That's about the worst thing that could happen. So we do need more accessible living arrangements. I believe the door on the rude candy building is very difficult to open and close, that's a matter of adjusting the closer. That's something I learned from one of the people that was leaving Pueblo for some of your.
Well, thank you so much and thank you for the good work that you do.
Probably took up more than your time, but.
No, you guys were delightful, so.
Thank you.
Wait, I have a question. Um, maybe and maybe you both can't answer that, but does the city have like a sidewalk plan?
Yes. Yes and no.
For repair?
We, okay, there's, there's, okay, a number of different things that we have. There is CDBG money. And the city takes 400,000 off the top of that just for curb ramps and sidewalks. Then there are the neighborhood groups that submit requests. Um, and a large part of that is for sidewalks and for curb ramps, you've got that. Uh, Public Works does some by itself, anytime there is uh, anytime they put in even paving, they have to make all the corners accessible. And it doesn't make sense to do that if they don't also straighten out the sidewalks a little bit. We've got bits and pieces, it has all been written down, but I don't think it's been presented as a policy. Um, I worked with that on the previous ADA coordinator. So I know that we have a one page draft sidewalk statement and it is by no means sufficient.
But it's a start and it's very important because if there was nothing, then the city's liability would be extremely high. Um, Pueblo's in the same boat as everybody else and the Department of Justice realizes that. We have been pushing for an RTA of Regional Transit Authority. And that would include money for sidewalks. Because right now, if you're a homeowner and your sidewalk has been turned into an ice floe by the tree roots, then you are technically responsible for replacing your sidewalk. It doesn't happen. I mean, and it's really not realistic, there have been some court cases in the past that say, no, it needs to be a city responsibility. And for that reason, I mean, I know you're all made of money. I mean, I've seen the budget, there's lots of money, right? So you don't have the money to do that. But with the Regional Transit Authority, get the people be willing to tax themselves for roads, for public transit and for sidewalks.
That's not just a transit authority, that's a transportation authority. We've had this idea for years and years and years and every time we bring it up, the gut feeling, because it involves money, is that voters would not go for it, but we've never tried. And when the street maintenance thing went through, it was like, wow, things have gotten bad enough. There are enough potholes in our streets that people are willing to put forth a little bit of money as long as they see where it's going. And it might be time to think about that in terms of sidewalks.
Yeah, so Kristen, I guess I'll follow up with Ms. Solano about the one pager that you were talking about for the language and then talk with our our Director of Public Works about the current sidewalk plan and go from there. Um, and then for your request for the to get ADA folks as part of the emergency drill that's actually coming up, CSEP's going to have an exercise. So I can definitely connect you with the person that's coordinating that and see if parts of the ADA committee can get on that.
Yes, and be aware that we do, we have a member who is deaf, but he hasn't been able to to participate in the last couple of years. And I think it's important for us to have those communication type disabilities represented. Because Sharon and I know something about it. But it's not the same as being deaf and having to depend on an interpreter.
Right, well, I I really appreciate both of you coming today and giving that update. Um, seeing no other questions or comments, Councilor Atencio, did you have anything for the ADA committee? Saying none, uh, thank you both for coming and that concludes our agenda, so I conclude this work session at 6:48 PM.